I'll take it.
I know, I had to mow my lawn already.
Oh boo hoo. I'll mow my lawn anytime if I can get good weather. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We would like to welcome all out to our Riverdale City Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, we have roll call for the commissioners present. We have um all commissioners here with the exception of Commissioner Nay Nay, and she has requested to be excused. Um, we also have Commissioner Henstra who is joining us by telephone and will be part of the proceedings here tonight. We would now move to item B of our agenda, public comment. Uh, opening that up for comments from members of our community to address issues and concerns that they have. Uh, so we would now open that up for any uh input. But seeing that there is none, uh, taking opportunity of that today, we'll go ahead and move to item C, which would be our presentation and reports, the community development update uh by Mr. Cooper, please.
Uh, thank you. Nothing um new to report, just updates on what we've talked about in the past. Mission BBQ is continuing. Trader Joe's has started on some of their work on the shell of the building. And um Ken Garfis progressing, the Riverdale townhomes are progressing. Uh, we've yet to see any commencement on the apartments where the old Leslie's uh mobile home park used to be. They're still working out some issues there. Um, America First has, I believe, completed the pylons on the hillside and are are now moving to the pylons up on the top where the parking structure is. So you'll still hear some of that over the next couple of weeks, but and it actually may be louder because of the orientation of those pylons. They're deeper and they're kind of up on the hill, so it might echo a little bit differently.
I still have contacts there at America First, and I spoke to some of them just within the last week, and they said that a major announcement went out to the employees to say that the crane that they have up there right now is being recalibrated to be able to uh take care of the the structure development that they'll have up top, so.
Yeah, good stuff. And then the homes at uh Motor View are are going up, almost seems like one a day. It it's pretty amazing, but all things are going well.
Good. Um, any questions for Mr. Cooper of development issues that uh you have questions on?
If we're gonna bring that up about what you've discovered?
Mm hmm. And just as we get into the uh next item, we'll talk about that. Yep.
Next on our agenda would be the consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five for both the work session and the regular meeting. Commissioners, was there any corrections or amendments that we need to make to those? Then a motion would be in order, please.
I move we accept the consent items.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept them.
I second it.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next would be our action items, item E, motion to untable the following item, which was the consideration and recommendation of a legislative decision to amend Riverdale City Code ten nineteen nine, temporary structures for seasonal sales.
So you'll just see a motion to?
We had, need the motion to proceed with that.
I'll make a motion to untable consideration and recommendation of a legislative decision to amend Riverdale City Code ten nineteen nine, temporary structures for seasonal sales.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, the motion passes. Um, so we now have that open for uh continued discussion uh so that we can uh subsequently move to item two of the action items, which would be forwarding a recommendation. So um having that reopened now, what additional information do we have that uh can help us make a a wise decision on that?
So Chair, if you, if I may, I'll start.
Please.
So as you uh recall, we're looking at um City Ordinance ten nineteen nine. And um right now, it's pretty um restrictive on the uh especially the definition of seasonal sales. And so what we've recommended in the in the packet and in the transmittal is to uh better define what seasonal sales are, which in this case would include uh fresh uh fruits and vegetables. Um, the discussion last time was around the exemption um of those folks that don't pay sales tax. So there was concern. There has been a concern, and part of the reason why um our code reads this way is that there was a a historical concern about um the availability of these types of roadside stands setting up and potentially um avoiding the collection and payment of sales tax. Uh, the state does exempt some of those types of uh users, so fruits and vegetables, nurseries, those all get exempted. So if you recall, we had dialogue about the appropriateness of that. And I'll say that our petitioner is here, Mr. Kenny McFarland, so um i- in a moment, we'll invite him up potentially and and you can ask him some questions directly. Um, so in the spirit of trying to ascertain whether or not um our business community might be concerned with uh fruits and vegetable stands setting up, selling competitive products at um without collecting and paying sales tax. I did talk to um Home Depot. Well, I went to Home Depot. I wasn't able to get an answer from them, but I uh talked to Walmart and Target and was able to have some good dialogue with them. And uh both store managers, rightly so, they weren't speaking on behalf of the corporations. They were speaking on behalf of them as store managers for the local stores, but neither of the stores had any concerns about um the idea of having vendors set up temporary structures for the purpose of seasonal sales in the context of that fifteen week period that we've discussed, even though some of them might be exempt, in the case of McFarland Farms um being fruits and vegetables. And so I don't see that we would have a big issue in in our local business community with some of those folks that might be affected. I wanted to talk to Home Depot because of the Christmas tree sales. Christmas tree sales are also exempt from paying state sales tax as a nursery, as long as that connection is made from the sale to the nursery. Um, and in the case of birches, I I believe it is. Uh, so I don't believe that there's any issues there. In fact, both Target and Walmart were very supportive of our local business community and thought that um anything that they could do, even as small as just giving a head nod to this, would be um very supportive of our local community. So that was interesting. Um, and so barring any discussion tonight, I'll just want to clarify that the way that this is reading is that the following seasonal sales would be permitted, fruits and vegetables, holiday-related items and uh including Christmas trees and other temporary seasonal goods as approved by the as approved by the Community Development Director. Only allowed in the C three zones. Uh, we talked about the appropriateness of that. Mostly along Riverdale Road. It wouldn't be allowed in our 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 zones, our residential zones. It would still be allowed in the A one zone, but only as a product of the local um seasonal items produced on premise. And then we've added the language that a permit would be required, and that permit would require the applicant to produce a sales tax certificate except for those types of businesses that are exempt by state law, which in this case would be a fruits and vegetable stand, a tree, nursery, those kind of things. So any other seasonal sales that might be approved, fireworks, for instance, um if they are exempt from sales tax, which I don't think they are, then um then they would be required to produce that sales tax certificate. And then in general, um the other items that are in the new code generally mimic the um the old code. They're just organized and and more clear, I think, in the new in the new language. Uh, there is a restriction on the proximity of these structures, so five hundred feet on either side of the street. Uh, that's a little closer than the current one thousand. And so that's to be supportive again of our local businesses, but also allow for those seasonal sales uh folks to be distanced away from each other. Same kind of requirements in terms of getting uh private property ownership permission, self-contained structures, um being able to uh be safe in terms of the ingress and egress, not setting up in locations that might block the sidewalk or public right of way. Um, making sure that the structure itself is under two hundred square feet. So all of those are in the new code, and most of that mimics the old code.
This would be monitored by the Weber, David, Morgus, Morgan Health Department, that's facility, these facilities?
If the if the vendor is required to to have such a permit or such an application made to uh Weber Morgan, then we wouldn't regulate that. That would be as part of their own their own deal. Uh, there's nothing in this language that would require that. Um, and we would only regulate the actual structure through code enforcement. So the application would come to me, I would approve the use, let's say it's a fireworks stand or a fruits and vegetable stand. So we would look at, is that a permitted use? Yes. Can they provide the application? Yes. Um, and then once they set up, then our code enforcement would go out and monitor the um the actual building and make sure everything's conducted in a way that's conducive to the ordinance.
Just refresh my memory, they would have to produce and provide their own power?
That's right.
Or arrange if this commercial site, if they were getting um permission from a commercial site to be on their premise, then they could possibly have an arrangement for like
I think it's written.
Or is it?
I think it's written that they have to provide their own because we don't want there to be power cords and and such going back and forth.
Self-contained. Now, if um an applicant came in and said, I'm posting up directly next to a a meter of some kind, you know, maybe there's a sign and there's a meter on the sign and that meter can provide power, and it's within a distance that's reasonable, right? Five, ten feet, then I think that could be considered um as a approved, but we don't want folks on the front edge of the parking lot stringing um yeah, electrical cords across to the to the back of the building.
I know we're talking uh more more specifically about uh fruits and vegetables and things like this, but that all also includes things like shaved ice stands and those types of things as well.
So if you look in your packet uh in the red language, um that is a specific permitted use. Uh, fruits and vegetables, holiday-related items, and then other temporary seasonal goods as approved, and then it specifically says shaved ice and snow cones.
I noticed the prior, I didn't notice that part.
So we have, you know, the Hokkalea folks have been around for a long time and those kind of things. And so under this new rule, if it gets um uh favorably recommended and then passed by the city council, then those folks would have to come in, get the permit, um and then produce the sales tax certificate, because they would be required to pay that.
Okay. Maybe we could invite Mr. McFarland to step forward, and then we could ask questions of you. And for our record, if you would just uh state your name and your city of residence, please.
Yeah. Kenny McFarland is my name, and um from West Weber, Utah, just a little community, so technically Ogden, I guess, but um uh I'm just to get me to know me just a little bit, um I'm a seventh-generation farmer in West Weber, um about five miles west of I fifteen. Um, my grandpa, all of my ancestors were either a dairy or cattle or something like that. And then my dad started, when my grandpa sold the dairy cows, my dad started a produce farm, and we've been generally wholesale uh for the most part. Um, when I was in high school to make a little extra money, I would take a truckload of produce up to town and sell it, and that's how I paid for college and different things, so. Um, it's, I feel like kind of a a kid who started a long-winded business and kept it going for his career in life, you know, and but it's worked out really well for us, so. We sell right now about fifty percent of our produce is wholesale uh to grocery stores, and then about the other fifty percent we retail. So we we run currently around ten between, depending on the year, uh between eight and fifteen locations where we where we sell, where we retail our produce. Um, we try our very best to only sell what we grow. Um, we have, I have some neighbor farmers that are really good at like watermelon and cantaloupe, and I'll sell their produce as well. But for the most part, everything comes from our farm. Um, as you can see, I'm dressed in my farm clothes. I came straight from a tractor, and I'm headed straight there right after this, so. Um, I uh um I'm I'm answering any questions. Thanks for taking your time out of your busy lives. I know that in your service and being the city council. By the way, I love Riverdale City. I come here all the time to shop, so I pass Ogden all day long to come here, so.
I have one question uh that we addressed last meeting. And that's the season. Are the proposed code is stating fifteen months?
Weeks.
Weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll solve the problem.
Fifteen weeks?
Yeah.
But is that sufficient for your growing season? Because I'm I'm wondering if twenty was more appropriate because you've got clear into October with pumpkins and things like that, and I don't know whether that's anything that you include.
Yeah, I I appreciate you bringing that up. I did, I actually, when I heard fifteen weeks, I was like, oh, that's plenty of time. We actually made some changes to our business recently. We've started, and and especially with the economic turmoil right now, we're gonna, we've grown a lot of different vegetables, more than we ever have, that will start in June this year. And I don't know if that'll work in Riverdale City, depending on how things work out, but typically on a normal year, from now on, we would start in June, and we would sell whatever we can produce during the month of June. Typically, we don't sell pumpkins. Um, we grow a lot of pumpkins for grocery stores, and we have one U-Pick pumpkin patch at the monastery farm in Huntsville. Um, so we typically don't um sell pumpkins at our locations, although the wholesale pumpkin market is becoming kind of cutthroat, and so we've we've actually considered leaving our stands open um until Halloween and doing that. So that would make us actually around twenty weeks. Uh, well, maybe a little more than that, June, July, August, September, October. And I don't know if that's doable. We don't have to go that long. I mean, we're we're open to whatever you feel is right, um whatever you think would work.
And the fifteen weeks is not a fixed period of time. It's fifteen weeks for that vendor. So if they if they set up in June, they have fifteen weeks. If they set up in August, they have fifteen weeks. So it's the duration of time in which that temporary um structure is allowed to exist. So fireworks, for instance, would be later in the season in terms of the growing season, but they could run from for their own fifteen weeks.
Okay.
Do you see any negative repercussions from extending that to twenty in this bit of code?
Discussion was twenty weeks.
I I think that's um up to you. I don't see any negative uh repercussions, again, given the feedback from the businesses. Um, if that works, especially for harvest season and and what the market's doing, then I think that's great.
Personally, if that would encourage McFarland Farms to start in June, offering that to our citizens and the community, I would be in favor of making that that amendment.
Have you spoke to any of the uh business owners where you're looking to put your facility?
We have in the past, actually, and um we've we've gotten okay, but I don't think the the city allows it. And so we've come back to the city, and it's always been just not an option. Um, and and I totally understand why it hasn't been over the years, to protect your your amazing retail stores that are here, but um, this year, I told, my wife is the one who really runs the retail side of our business, and that's who Brandon's been contacting mostly. I run the farm, but um she hasn't really reached out to anyone yet this year because um we didn't know for sure if this would happen, and just be kind of wasting the realtor's time to to work with us, but we, all of the other locations that we work with, we were pretty successful in finding vacant lots that are not being used by other people. And we can pay pay a decent amount for these different landowners because we're just there temporarily, and typically, we um we actually spur quite a bit of traffic, and so there's like some of the locations where we go, they actually will let us go there for free, just because we drive so much traffic to an area that's usually a dead spot in a commercial zone, and it allows like a gas station, a Chevron, or a struggling retail store of any kind to really thrive. What, you know, for the months that we're there, so. Um, but yeah, that's that's a good question. Oh, sorry.
This is pretty specific in it saying that uh under no conditions shall the structure or use be permitted longer than fifteen weeks. If uh if they wanted to stay longer, could they uh reapply? Would that be a possibility?
I think it's it's for that use, for that period of time. If if it's something that you all think needs to be extended, then I would rather have it be pretty prescriptive in the code instead of trying to kind of game that system. Um, and so if if that's something that you would like to change in the current language, then based on your motion, you'd want to make sure that you modify that to include any um additions to what's currently written, and then we'll make sure we'll get that on the record and and get that to the city council appropriately.
Okay.
So as this is written currently, it does not require collecting sales tax for this kind of a
Right, so the so the way that's written is that um an applicant would have to produce a sales tax certificate, meaning they've registered with the state, except for those businesses that are exempt from paying sales tax, which would be specifically, in this case, a nursery or a um fruits and vegetables.
And those aren't accepted by the city, they're accepted by the state.
Right. Therefore, we wouldn't uh require them to produce that sales tax certificate. Whereas someone like a fireworks stand or a snow cone stand where they are required to pay state still sales tax, we would have that requirement on on in this current writing.
Right.
It does look like there are some specifics written into the Utah State Code where if you took some product from neighboring farms, then you may have to, in fact, produce.
May I read that? I'm glad you brought that up because it's an important consideration, and so let me just read directly from their literature. The exclusive sale and seasonal garden or farm crops or seedlings and plants sold during the harvest season is exempt if sold by the agricultural producer, um an employee of the producer, or a member of the producer's immediate family. If the producer, producer's employee, or producer's immediate family member sells anything other than the producer's qualified seasonal crops, the producer is operating a retail establishment and must collect sales tax. So that it would be the only difference to how you've described your business.
Just something to be aware of.
Yeah, yeah, and we could track that. We'd be willing to track that for sure, so.
And so in that case, you would
City tax and the state tax, is that?
That's just
That's in the state tax code.
Be a state tax. But would we pay that to the city and the state?
Uh, you pay it to the state, and then they remit back to us our portion.
I don't know how that works, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But you're not, you're exempt from that.
Well, the one the one caveat, which I've never thought of, I've never had that um issue brought up, actually, is that we do buy so from a neighboring farm. He doesn't do any retail. He's just his wholesale, and so we resell some of his produce. Watermelon and cantaloupe specifically, yeah.
So somehow, as you apply for this permit, you would have to uh work with the state to get that sales tax um certificate for that portion of your business, and then track that um separately, so as you, as something goes out the front, if it's a something you've produced, no sales tax, you'd have to ring it up separate, essentially.
Yeah. We we track what leaves the farm every day pretty well, and what comes back in. Um, and then also track the sales of different things, and so that that shouldn't be too hard to do, actually.
Okay.
Be one more step for the man, my manager, but she's she's awesome. She can take care of it, yeah.
Did that answer your question?
That's good.
Yeah.
What type of produce?
Um, so our main thing over the years has been sweet corn. Um, but we've recently started. I mean, when I was younger, we grew a lot of like with our own watermelon and cantaloupe and muskmelon and honeydew and all that kind of stuff, and then um, right now, we focus mainly on sweet corn. We focus on um the melons. And then we grow zucchini, tomatoes, peppers, like eight different types of peppers. This year, it's about twenty-six different items, so I'm like thinking of alphabetically like beets, beans, broccoli, cauliflower, like it just
I'm getting hungry.
Yeah. A lot of those are experimental. I'm I'm actually, I was like out working the ground, getting ready to plant tomorrow, so we'll see how that goes, but um, the the majority of what we we've been doing it for a long time, and and we have a decent system in place to do it, so. But the sweet corn has been our main thing over the years that that we sell quite a bit of.
What would be your June offerings?
Um, so yeah, there'd be
Beans, I'm assuming.
We planted beets and peas. Um, beans will be coming on. Um, it looks like mid to late June. Um, I another item that I'm gonna buy from, I I found a farmer in the San Francisco Bay area that's gonna uh ship sweet corn to me until my corn comes on, so I'll have to think of that for the tax as well, but um, so just to have that corn there, for people don't want corn halfway through the summer, they want it all summer long, so. Um, and then we'll have zucchini will be on about the mid-June and um uh beets, radish, um I just all sorts of lettuces, um greens, leafy greens and stuff like that, so.
Awesome. I think this will be a great addition to our city.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. And and to your uh point on the food safety, too, I I call it food safety, but it's with the Morgan Weaver Health Department, um that that's a good point, and we do, we are, because of our our re- our gross sales numbers, we're required to fall under what's called a FSMA state audit. And so we, the state audits our farm every year for food safety, quality. And then our our wholesale stuff is really scrutinized, and we have a a very large um either what's called um Harmony Gap, let's see, no, Harmony something, it's takes like five days. We have an auditor from out of state fly in, and they come to our farm and other farms to audit all of the farms to check for food safety, that we're using the right practices, chemicals, and everything like that, that everything's safe. No, no, we've
Must be doing it right.
The the first year we failed because I had no idea what we were doing.
Right.
And the reason we have to do it is because we do sell the associated food stores, which goes out to Macy's and all these other places, and then Harman's, and we sell to our pumpkins, go to Walmart, they used to anyway, but um so because of that uh wholesale part of our business, we've had to do some very um intense food safety audits, but for the for the produce that we sell at our stands, that's covered by the state under what's called FSMA on FSMA audit, so. And if we ever did prepared foods, like if we ever cooked our sweet corn at our stands, we don't do that right now, but we've thought of doing that. If we ever cook the sweet corn on site, or, you know, cut some vegetables, like we'll cut watermelon, then at that point, we would be regulated by I think uh Weber Morgan Health Department.
Under food handlers.
Under the food handlers, yes, yes, so.
How many locations are you hoping to have?
Um, this, well, so in Riverdale, we'd probably just start with one, but this year we'll have um between eight and ten. Depending on this, and yeah, um, we we usually, yeah, I mean, it depends on who we'd speak to as far as landowners and commercial spaces. Um, it would be kind of interesting for one, like, I don't know what you call it, but over the bridge on kind of the north side and then the south side of Riverdale. I don't think they would really compete with each other, but um, most likely, we'd start with one this year, and then if y'all like it, then we can maybe open a second one.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Great.
Just one more point of clarification, Chair. The the way that it's written now, it's in the C three zone, so that's uh I can give you a map and show you kind of where that is. But it has to be, any temporary structure has to be on a an improved site, so there wouldn't be any um vacant sites, and we really don't have vacant sites in the C three zone. Um, they're largely developed, but uh that's just another thing to take note of is that it, the property owner would have to give permission, and the site has to be developed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions or points to discuss?
Do we need to make a motion to extend it to 20 weeks to amend?
We would include that in the motion.
In our recommendation to the city.
Hey, this is Colleen. I don't have my notes with me from our last meeting, but there was like kind of a typo point that I had brought up. Mr. Cooper, I don't know if you made a note of that?
Right. So now that we're moving in this direction, I chose to keep it. It was that typo that exempted those that were exempt from state sales tax, right?
Okay.
So we're keeping, we're keeping that now if you're to make the favorable recommendation.
Okay, then a motion would be in order if someone would like to address that.
I'll make a motion to forward a positive favorable recommendation to city council to amend the Riverdale City Code 10199, temporary structures for seasonal sales with the amendment that we extend those seasonal sales periods to 20 weeks as opposed to 15.
I'll second that.
We've got two seconds, so we've got that covered. Okay, Ms. Rivera, would you poll the commissioners, please?
Yes. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nae. Oh, wait, she's out.
She's excused.
Okay. Commissioner Nolan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henstra.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bothard.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Hey, the motion passes with the amendment. And so we appreciate and look forward to having you a part of our business community. Thank you.
Chair, may I just add one thing?
Sure.
Process-wise, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. It goes to the city council. As it stands right now, we're planning on having a meeting next Tuesday. Same bat channel, same bat time.
Is that Wednesday? Oh, I'm sorry.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's subject to cancellation sometimes. But I'll send you folks the packet if it gets scheduled. And they'll make the final, it's a legislative action. They'll make the final decision.
Would you need anyone from our business there to say anything?
It's always nice to have them hear from you directly. Thank you.
Nope, thank you. All right. Next, our agenda would be our comments portion from the Planning Commission and city staff. Any points that you would like to bring up? Okay, not having anything. Item G, which is consideration for an adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for all of your participation tonight.
Good, appreciate it.
Right?
And all the other stuff.
Yeah, all the other stuff.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, 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 no.
Have you ever tried roasted beets? You gotta try roasted beets. Put a little apple cider vinegar.